So this is the Goldfield Bridge. Another bridge that we looked at was in Spencer. And this one has a different kind of fence on the outside and a different kind of separation rail. They added this steel pipe rail on the separation rail to get it up above the height. They don't have the open rail. It's just a solid concrete rail that they added the pipe rail to. On the outside, they added post in between, concrete post in between, and then had the lighting on them, which we'll kind of talk about later, too. So here's a different, look at the two different kinds of fences that were, you know, there's all, you can do lots of different things with fence. But here's just kind of two options. The Goldfield one is basically, you know, steel bars, slats that are, I think they're at like, I don't know for sure on Goldfield, but they're probably like at anywhere from four to six inch spacing between the slats there. And you can see that, you can see right through them, you can see the strawberry behind them. Same thing on the one in Spencer. That's called an art decal. According to the DOT aesthetics specialist, that's an art decal railing. And it just has a little more pattern to it. And it's, the one on the left is painted black. It's steel painted black. The one on the right is just galvanized steel. The next thing I want to look at is the form liners and the colored sealers. Now, for this part of the next few slides, I've got a, the, they're of a picture, they're not actual pictures of a bridge, but they're drawings that were done by Kimball Olsen. He's the aesthetics guy at the DOT. And the reason I asked him if I could use those pictures, because they are, it's actually very similar to what we anticipate that the Sumner Avenue Bridge will look like. So, this is a, okay, the, what they did was they used form liner on the face of the piers, but not on the caps. They used form liner on the wings of the abutment, and then built the post up taller than the, than the, just actually what the ring, to line up with the top of the fence. And the difference between what, if you look at the side of what we're proposing for the Sumner Bridge, is that these beam, the concrete superstructure part of this thing, which is the, you know, the beams from, from there down to there, is this is much deeper. This bridge is much larger than your bridge. This is like a, I believe it's about 500 feet, or maybe 600 feet long. The spans are about 100 foot. I think 90 to 100 feet long spans. And, and the Sumner Bridge is about 200, or about 300 feet, 290, 280, 290 feet. And the superstructure is going to only be about two and a half feet thick. So, you, this, your bridge will be scaled down, but the ideas are the same. We're going to use T-piers, and we're going to propose to do a wing that looks like that, too. So that's why I wanted to show you this picture. I thought, when I saw this, I asked him if we could use that, because it feels like we're doing something very similar. This is a picture of the same proposed bridge, looking down the sidewalk. And again, I think what you'll have here will look very similar. That will have a concrete block on the end of the, here. And the reason that we feel like we should do that is because, one of the things that we took from the old bridge is the massiveness of the abutments. I mean, that bridge is just massive. And, you know, we don't, this bridge, the new bridge will seem so much lighter and, but to kind of bring, you know, tie into the, the history of the site, we thought it would be good to make something that looked pretty substantial at the, at the end. But, the wings that we're using are going to be actually very short and not very noticeable. So we're suggesting that we bring that wing all the way up, and then make that kind of, just like an end post at the end of the bridge, and then start the fence after that. The other thing that's very similar is we could do the short concrete rail, and then put a steel railing on top of it, on the separation rail between the roadway and the bridge. Or the roadway and the sidewalk, sorry. Okay, and this last picture is just a better view of what the piers look like on that. And there's some differences from what, I'll show you in a second, what they were proposing. We're not going to have this cap on the end, because this is just kind of, there's, these beams are not actually continuous. There's a gap there. And so they covered up that gap with this. Well, our slab will be continuous, there's no need for that. We are proposing to have a plain concrete cap. We're proposing to have a shaft similar to this. We are proposing not to round the, the face of the piers. We're going to point, and make them come to a point. And there's a couple of reasons for that. But the, we're also looking to put form liner, which would be, you know, somewhere below the low water elevation, the typical low water elevation. You run the form liner and then up to the top of the cap. So the, the face of the shaft would be, would have form liner on it. And I want you, this is one option for the form liner. We're, I've got some sketches that will, pictures that will show you a different option, too. Okay, so the next slide is, I think the last time I was here, a couple of, kind of a couple of comments that referred back to this slide, that we felt like maybe this was a more suitable form liner for this area because of the limestone outproppings around the bridge. And, and what we had originally proposed was, we were going to have, you know, this, one thing that I liked about this, too, was this kind of creates some mass at the end of the bridge, too. And we're going to, we were going to use something very similar to this for what we're proposing. And, oh, the other thing on that last picture that I want to point out is the color of it, too. We felt like the color was, you know, the, and the reason I threw this picture in here was because of the coloring. It's a, this is colored sealer, and it's a kind of a, I'm not sure of the exact color. I think it's called a buff, limestone buff. And it's to mimic just the naturally occurring limestone in the area. And this, this project is in Decorum. And, so now, the next few slides are actually drawings that we've done of the piers for the bridge on Sumner Avenue. This, this is the, the, like I was saying, the pier that we're proposing, and where's, the pattern that we're showing on here is, is that ashlar pattern that was on that one picture. I showed you a couple as well. This is the exact same pier with the block form liner, similar to what was on the, the pictures that we got from the DOT. And this next drawing is what we're proposing would be at the end of the bridge. This is the, the, the abutment, or the, actually, the support at the end of the bridge, and we're going to run that all the way up to the top of the fence. And then this would be the wing, and it would have that ashlar stone pattern up to the height of the top of the railing. What we're showing here, this is, I guess, our kind of recommendation at the end of the bridge, is that what we're looking at this picture. This has the kind of picket style fence and the block. We're going to every, we'll put several blocks on there to, and, and that would be a place where we could add lights if we want to do that, too. The next picture is just the exact same picture, but just to show you the difference, we have the block form liner and then that art decal railing, just to give you a, another look, I guess. Okay, the next thing is the lighting. Some things about lighting, there's, the options that you have for lighting is you can do no lighting, or you could put decorative pole lights, which I guess are similar to like what has just been a project recently here in town, was just had some pole lights installed. And I tried to get details of that actual light, and I wasn't able to get them today. I talked to Justin, was it Justin? Is that his name?
Yeah, Justin Stoffel.
And, and he didn't have, I didn't get details today. But, and then the third option would be to put step lights on the path, just to illuminate the path. And again, these are, the reason you do the decorative pole lights may be to tie the bridge into the downtown area, or as a transition into the downtown. And then another option, I guess, but you could also do some special lighting that could, you know, be, could also enhance the bridge. I'll show you some pictures of that. So, okay, here's a bridge up in Mason City. This is the pole lighting. And what they, you can see they've got a series of pole lights all across the bridge. And in this case, they're actually outside the sidewalk. There's a little pedestal that's built on the outside of the deck. So the base of the light is out beyond the fence, and it just sticks up above the fence. Another way to do that is like on that same Spencer Bridge, they put a post, it's included along the edge of the sidewalk within the fence, and then they, at each post, they put a light on top of that. So that's just a different way of handling those lights. These would, I guess, probably be a little bit less expensive, because you need to get the light up to the proper height. And so if you're outside, you've got a little longer pole, a little different base, but. And then the step light option is another one, a couple of projects in Decorum, they didn't actually like the idea of having lights up above the bridge. They felt like it provided too much light for the whole area, so they, but they did want to ride some light on the, on the deck. So, this is on, that would be on the rail between the roadway and the sidewalk, and then there'd just be a series of lights that would just shine down onto the sidewalk. And this is another bridge in Decorum, where we didn't have a concrete rail, but, so we just actually put them in a curb. But they, you can see it, this was obviously taken at night, so you can just, it's just illuminating just the sidewalk.
Let's take a break for a minute, Stan?
Sure. When you're, if you do, if you set it up now, it's very easy to add lighting later, or the wiring.
As much of the lights on Main Street are a pain in the ass. We don't want to get those lights. We just spent $9,000 updating them again, and that, they're a constant battle.
The, the lights that actually are downtown, those are no longer, longer manufactured, maybe for a good reason. And then the, the lights that are in the downtown, the new downtown plaza are actually just built to look like the other lights. They're not the same company built. So, but yes, they, we, the guts had to be ripped out of the old lights. Essentially, none of the sensors, the ballast, all of them failed within, I don't know how many years of expenses. But, they're all failing now, so.
You know, this picture here is, again, it's a trail bridge up in Decorum, and, and they really kind of went all out on the lighting on this one. And this is a picture of, this would be a special use. These are LED, programmable LED lights, and you could do all kinds of things with that. They, I think I told you about them before. The light, the colors can be changed depending on the season. You could do, you know, green and red at Christmas. Decorum's school colors are blue and red. So this was set up, I think, at their homecoming. You can do, you know, all kinds of options for that. Now, I guess I'm not exactly sure how we would do something like that on, on your bridge here in Humboldt, because it just doesn't seem to fit that, that kind of scenario. This is over a highway, so it's very visible. You know, I, I honestly, I guess I just don't see that happening here. But I thought I'd throw it in there. If you guys really like the idea, we could try to figure something out, too.
We've got flashlights.
I don't quite see that one. But, and that was also very expensive, too. The lighting at this trail bridge was about $50,000, so. Okay, the other thing, though, I didn't, I, we didn't, I didn't show any slides for last week, was an overlook. But I thought I'd bring this up, just so we, we talked about it, and you can decide if it's something that you're interested in doing. That bridge up in Spencer, this is what it looks like from the outside looking in. It's basically just a slab kind of built in. It was just an extension built out of the slab, and it gives you an opportunity as you're going across. On this bridge, they, they have one on, they actually have a sidewalk on both sides. They got one side of the bridge, they got a trail, the other side they got a sidewalk. They have an outlook, an overlook on both sides of the bridge. This is a view looking, from the sidewalk looking out through the overlook, I guess. This isn't exactly how we would propose to do it on yours. What we came up with was a little different option. This is kind of, I don't know, maybe it's hard to see exactly what's going on here, but instead of making it round, you know, the round, I don't know, contractors probably do not like round very much, because it just makes it more, more complicated. So we thought if we were going to do it, we could simplify it and kind of make some straight lines in there. Basically, the area of this overlook is the same as the one on the Spencer project, which is a half circle. And, and what, and we drew it up with that art decal rail, which is the same as the Spencer one. But basically, you have a big concrete post on each side of the overlook, and then you could put a light on each one of those. And then you have this, just this area where you could kind of go out and look out. This, this would be to the, on the north side of the bridge. One thing that we hadn't quite nailed down, yeah, would we do it exactly in the middle of the bridge, which would then be kind of off-center of the, of the channel? Or would we put it over the pier that's right in the middle of the channel? And, you know, and that's something we, if you're interested in doing that, we'll work on that a little bit more. But, the other thing that we thought we'd do is this, we, you know, they, in that last picture, they, they didn't put anything out there. We thought, if you're going to do an overlook, maybe you should have a bench or something. And so what we were proposing is that if you're going to, if you're interested in this, we'd use a bench that would be similar to the seating that is around the statue in Picknoe Park, where we just kind of build up a little concrete base and then put a stone on top of it. And, anyway, that's an, an idea for an out, an overlook. Okay, so now, how much does all this cost? What I did on the next slide here is I kind of summarized it. The way, the way this reads, the items are the pedestrian rail, which is the outside railing, the fence on the outside of the sidewalk, then the concrete barrier rail separation is the rail between the roadway and the sidewalk. The concrete, the next concrete barrier railing is the south rail, which is without the sidewalk. Then, the cost of form liner is actually included in the cost of the concrete. So it'll be just a part of the total concrete as it's bid. But to try to separate that out, we, what we did with the form liners, we calculated the area that we'd, we'd use form liner on. And then we just put $10 per square foot on that, on the price of that. The cost of the colored sealer, there's actually two different cut prices there. The single color sealer is less expensive, usually about $3 to $4 a square foot. And that is, that would be used on the barrier rails. Like on the pictures in the Goldfield one, they're painted white. Oh, did I skip over them? Oh, I didn't talk about the color. I guess I was thinking the buff color. So I, I would think we would do the buff colored limestone instead of the white. But the, the, the single color would be on the barrier rails and on the, the, the abutments, the massive part of the abutments. Those would be just a single color. Then when you do the, you use multiple color on the ashlar stone, and then they, they like do a background color, and then they come back in, and then they, you know, kind of add different, different shades in there to, to provide highlights and make it give it more depth. And that's, I was told between $5 to $8 per square foot for that. So, the other, and then the other two items I've shown on here are the overlook and the lighting. And so what I, in the table here, what I got is if you did just a standard bridge, you have to have a fence on the outside of the bridge, so it would just be like a chain link fence, would be like $30 a foot. It would cost $9,000. By comparison, the steel rail is very expensive. It costs about, and I, I actually, we were trying to decide how we wanted to present this, and we were looking at ranges. And I just put the top side of our range on all of these. So, it's better to have sticker shock now than later, I guess. At least that's our hope. So, $180 was like a, really a high-end railing price. And so that is $45,000 additional just for the pedestrian rail. And then you can kind of go down through the same thing. The concrete barrier railing is the open, the Iowa standard open rail. Those are the prices for that. The aesthetic rails, these are, again, very high prices. The $200 for the separation rail includes the concrete part plus a steel railing on top of it to get it up to a, to match the height of the sidewalk rail on the, on the pedestrian rail on the outside of the sidewalk.
Or you can put a taller concrete rail in.
Yeah, or you can do a taller concrete, where it would be, like we're saying, the $110 a linear foot for that, it's two foot eight tall rail, and then you put like a 10 inch rail on top of it. But if you go with a three foot six, that would probably be closer to like 100 and, maybe somewhere in between there, maybe $150 a foot for that taller rail. And the form liners is $10 a square foot. The colored sealer, plain, single color, I was told to use like $3. I bumped it up a little bit. And I went on the high side of the multiple color. He told me five to eight, so I went eight. The overlook, again, that would just be part of the concrete for the bridge, but we just separated out those quantities and tried to come up with a, a pretty conservative estimate. We think an overlook might run in about $5,000, just using the extra concrete, the extra reinforcing steel, and the complications to build it. And the lighting, the $25,000, actually, I threw that in there, and then about the time I went to print this, I got an email from Aaron that said he talked to the electrician who installed those other lights, and it was about $4,500 per light. And this, this is not enough. We're probably looking at, we're, probably a minimum would be six lights if there's no outlook or overlook. We'd put a light at each end of the bridge and then at each pier, so there'd be six of them. If we do the overlook, it might be eight, because if we put the two lights right at the beginning of the overlook, plus at each of those piers, then we'd have eight of them. So, at $4,500, this would probably be more like $36,000 for the lights, the pole lights. If we did the step lighting, it would be probably half that. So, the net, if you add all up, you increase the cost of the bridge by $160, $170,000 to do the aesthetics, which is about in the ballpark. We talked about, you know, maybe we'd be in the 5% to 10% range, and we're talking about, we're estimating the project of the total cost would be about $1.92 million. And so we're, you know, right in that range between the 5% and 10% with the aesthetics. So, what we're proposing, our recommendation is that we use a steel picket fence. This is a, if you cut a section through the bridge and you just look at it, what we're proposing is we, this railing would be two foot eight tall. This would be a concrete rail that's three foot six tall. This would just be a steel picket fence with a series of concrete posts in between them.
Aluminum's not an option on a fence, is it?
Aluminum, they, actually, aluminum is actually more expensive than the steel.
Oh, I knew that, but.
Yeah.
But it's no maintenance, is all I'm saying, 10 years from now.
Yeah, the, what the DOT recommends for the, and what we've had good luck with is, you can actually galvanize the steel and then powder coat it, and it works. And they've had better luck with that. Now, it's kind of like double protection on it, but, but, you know, we, there was a project that we did in Mason City, it was putting a bunch of steel fence on, it wasn't just bridges, it was anywhere that they were using fence. And the key we found is that the surface preparation prior to painting is critical, and they did not prepare it. And so now we've had some failures, and lots of spots on that. But we did another project after this happened, and I made it a point to talk to the fabricator and say, we do not want this to happen, so whatever you're, we want to make sure, if you're saying we need a change order to make it better, then we need to, then we need to look into that. But they assured me that their, their surface prep was fine, and then, and we've had no problems. It's been like four years now, and there's not any rust shown up anywhere in this other steel railing that we did. But you're right, aluminum, long-term, you're probably not going to have the same.
No, just, once it starts to rust, it's just, you know, then it's a constant forever. So yeah, we're going to galvanize the surface first.
Is the Goldfield fence, is that just painted black?
No, I, I don't know if it's painted or if it's galvanized and painted. I, I don't know, I didn't get enough information on that, for sure. But I, I know what Kimball Olsen, the aesthetics guy from the DOT, he said that he typically will get plans for his review, and, and they're not using a powder coating. They're using a, I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not very fluent in the painting terminology, but there's, whatever other method there might be. He said that they, they really recommend that. His recommendation is galvanizing with powder coating. And I don't know if they did that on Goldfield. And that's a fairly new bridge, too. I haven't been out there to look at it up close myself, but I, we had a guy go out there and took some pictures. He happened to be going through, and he said it looked pretty nice, actually. He was pretty impressed with that bridge. So, this is what the elevation we've, of the bridge that we're proposing. It's a little different than what we had before. Last time I was here, this, we're showing the Texas concrete rail on the outside. We've got the wings that are being, or the ends of the abutments are being built up. The wings are being built up to the top of the railing height. And the piers have got the ashlar pattern on them.
You were talking about a point on the piers, were you? Were you talking about?
Yeah, just the shaft, instead of, instead of being rounded. The rounding, I guess, adds quite a bit of cost, too. They can, you know, contractors like to build things in straight lines and not curves. So again, like the, not using the curb on the, on the overlook, and then not curving the end of the pier shaft, we felt like we could save a little bit of money back there. That was kind of the main reason. We, I guess the.
Oh, I like the point, just one.
The, you know, there's a, you know, that, that also serves as a protection for the, if there's debris in the channel. And if you put a point in there, then you can put a steel, we would recommend putting a steel plate on the upstream side, and then, and then a galvanized steel plate again. And then on the downstream side, it would be, there'd be no steel there, but it'd be the same shape. It'd just be plain concrete on the downstream side. So, anyway, this is kind of the, the bridge that we envisioned here. And, the, so, there are two questions, and if you've got some, I guess this is kind of the older than new. And I assume you have questions for me, but I guess to kind of throw my questions out there, and we can maybe cover them in the discussion here, is, you know, our, our recommendation, like I said, is to use the Texas rail versus the open rail. To use the ashlar form liner or the block form liner. And we're, I don't know, I'm not sure about whether, which way I want to go on the overlook. I guess I'd like to hear some discussion about that. And, and I guess we're not quite sure whether you, you know, I think it's more of a community thing about whether you use pole lights, step lights, or no lights. And I, I, the, the projects that we've done with the lighting in Decorum have worked out really well to have the step lights. They, they are very happy with them. And the community, you know, that, that one was kind of more of a residential, well, it's this kind of residential bridge, but there's a buffer between the houses. But that, that bridge had houses right down the corners of the bridge. And so they didn't want these big lights that were shining down into their, you know, windows or their yard or whatever. So, that was really the reason we kind of pulled back on the pole lights and went with just the step lights. But now that they have them, they're pretty happy with them, too. And as far as the overlook versus no overlook, I, you know, I, I haven't seen, I haven't actually been to the bridge in Spencer, and I guess I just am not, I'm sure what you guys think of that. If it's something that you're interested in doing, it's, it's not a huge cost of overall percentage of it, or is it something that you think would be?
$15,000 minimum. You know, $15,000 to $20,000 minimum.
Yeah.
Is there overlook?
Well, you're putting more lights on.
Yeah, there's an extra couple of lights right there.
Removal headache.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I thought, you know.
Well, that's true, too.
I don't, I don't care for it personally. I don't know what you, you know, we got to walk right around the corner if you want to look at the river, I guess.
I mean, it's, you know, it just works itself. You know, the comments I've had from the public, you know, you know, there's a few people, you know, that approached me, and I'm not unhappy with some of the aesthetics we're doing, but now we get beyond aesthetics. Now we're into play toys. You know, we started spending money on play toys. Now are we really, now we're not building a bridge. Now we're building more of a play toy for somebody to stand out there and look at. You know, that's just, that's just my opinion, but it's just another 20, $30,000 that we're going to spend.
Well, I'm not for the, I'm not for the overlook. I have had a lot of comments telling me, though, that, you know, don't, don't screw it up, guys, because it's going to be here for 75 to 100 years, just like the last one was. We want it to be here that long, and we want it to look nice.
I think, I think we're working on it.
I mean, are, are, in general, are you happy with the, you know, the proposed look?
I like the.
Yep.
I, my own, just my own opinion, personally, I would, I would do the taller concrete rail, and I would add another steel rail on top of it, just my opinion on the, on the divider wall.
You, you would use the taller one?
I would use the taller concrete instead of using concrete steel. That's just my opinion, it's just less.
What are you showing there? Just the, the lower concrete, right?
This, the view that I'm showing here is actually on the south side, so all you're seeing is just the whole concrete rail. This drawing doesn't show the.
The north rail, if you go with the taller one, is still going to have slats in it, or, you know, in space for moving snow and.
Yes. Yeah, and I guess.
Just protection rail, just taller.
Right. Yeah, it would look like, I can, let me see if I can back up to. This might take longer than I thought.
It's on page 10 at the top.
Unless they're developing those.
This would be slide 30.
Only be taller, huh? Just be taller, you know, and get rid of steel.
Slide 28 or 29.
As possible.
So this is kind of a, probably the slide you're looking at here.
Yeah.
The, this, this has the short rail. This is two foot eight above the sidewalk, and then I think they actually went up to about five foot there. Four foot six. And that, and I don't, I haven't measured this, but I'm guessing. I, and that, and I don't, I haven't measured this, but I'm guessing that...
It's tall.
They made this, this Spence four foot six and they made this to match. Because I think if you just add, you know, two foot eight, you could, you need to add 10 inches to get it up to three foot six, which is the DOT's minimum or the Federal Highway Administration's minimum.
We'd have both sides at 42, or at...
Yeah, and I, and what I would recommend is that. I, I guess the, you could either do the, the shorter concrete rail with a 10-inch addition. And then actually, when you get to these posts, you wouldn't have this bar going across the top of it either.
You know, you got a single bar then.
And, and it would just be the single bar or, and then, and then actually, you know, one of the questions, I was talking to Kimball Olson, the, the bridge aesthetics guy at Ames today. And he, I said, "Do you need to go to four and a half feet?" Or, you know, the heat, the, the Federal Highway Administration national guidelines say that the fence has to be three foot six tall. And that Iowa chose to make their men, their recommended minimum four foot six. But he said that, that maybe it's just them being a little conservative. He said that all the studies show that there's no benefit to that taller sidewalk for the protection of bicyclists or pedestrians for that matter, so... I mean, you're, you know, the, the, the main reason for the, 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 I, I thought there was a requirement that if it was a, if it was bicycle trail width, then you would want, they would say you need the taller sidewalk so somebody doesn't, you know, lose control and fall against the fence and flip over it because it's too short. But he said that that's not the case. And he said, and I thought, well, doesn't it make sense that if you're narrower, you're more likely to lose, or, you know, maybe meet somebody in crossing and kind of get pushed up against the fence? And wouldn't it be better to have a taller rail on a smaller sidewalk? And he said, "No, the, it's actually, the reason that's not true is when you've got a 10-foot wide trail..."